Good afternoon and welcome to the 4:00 PM work session for Lynchburg City Council. Today, July 9th. So, I will turn to Mr. Rodica for our first presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity this afternoon to talk with you a little bit about a project that a team of staff members have been working on for the last several months. We are excited to tell you about what we've learned and provide some context for our conversation as we continue it on housing affordability in our community. The first thing I want to start off with, just a little bit of background, and I want to talk just from perspective. So, the lens that we brought as we were starting to develop our ideas, and so learning about ideas on affordable housing best or leading practices throughout the United States, is that is under the assumption that, you know, one of our community's goals is to really work on housing affordability in our community. Throughout the years, and we're going to go through a couple of these things, there've been a number of studies that have been done, like quite a few conversations that have been had about housing affordability. And so, you know, reasonable people can disagree about whether or not that's the city's role, but in for the perspective of this report, it is that, in fact, this is something that the city wants to engage in at this time and as we go forward into future. So, you remember earlier this year, there was a report from our Housing Collaborative on January 8th of 2019 that showed a couple of things. So, first of all, the general idea, this is a long report, but the general idea was that housing supply, affordable housing is in short supply in the city of Lynchburg, and that many households in the community face extreme housing instability, so people having to move quite a bit. So, those are two concerning issues that obviously we would want to continue to study. But after that conversation, the city manager asked what we call the Collaborative for a Livable Lynchburg, which is just a group of departments consisting of the Department of Community Development, Department of Economic Development and Tourism, and Public Works, as well as me as the representative from the city manager's office. So, the city manager asked us to conduct a research project on what are the leading practices throughout the United States for cities and counties and towns? What are people doing that it's really successful and is sort of cutting-edge on how people are addressing housing affordability concerns throughout the United States? So, this presentation today is a very broad overview of that research. In your packet, you have a document that we've been working on for the last several months that, you know, I recognize that it takes a little while to get through, but that provides a lot more detail, and we're going to provide a very broad overview of that, those findings today, and give you a good understanding of what the city council might do in the future to think about housing affordability concerns as we go forward.
... based on a couple, I guess, assumptions that I think I don't agree with, quite frankly, with the assumptions. But when you look at the economics of it, you can say, "We want to have housing more affordable." Two ways to get there, right? Have the prices come down, or the income go up. None of this talks about income going up, and it all talks about how to bring prices down. And I think that's a shortsighted, kind of a losing proposition, quite frankly, because it keeps values of properties down, as opposed to a city which really wants to thrive, individuals really want to thrive by their properties going up, landlords want their properties to go up, people want their values of income to go up. This whole thing is kind of looking at it completely the opposite way that I would look at it, and, you know, any economist would look at it.
Sure. So, I would suggest, and we'll get more into that as we go forward, but I would suggest that...
Mr. Rodica, hold on.
Yes?
Councilmember Wilder, did you have something to say?
I appreciate the comments. I understand what you're saying, but I would like to hear the presentation, and then maybe ask questions at the end about comments that we can better the process, or maybe suggestions since the beginning process, maybe can add some suggestions on how to strengthen the process.
I guess it's just the fact that I read this whole, the whole document, and as I was reading through it, it was based on a certain paradigm, a paradigm that I think is not the best way to see it, and so I'm sure we're going to sit here and listen to a lot of that.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice.
So, I was wondering if there was another way, or if they would have looked at it maybe from both perspectives rather than one.
So, before we get too far into that, we'll just say, so, totally reasonable points, and we certainly are having conversations frequently about improving incomes and that sort of thing, as far as our economic development stuff goes. So, today, we're going to talk about more about the housing market and thinking about what places are doing to make sure that places are continuing to be affordable as they go forward. So, just in the presentation here, we're going to talk about some background, just some definitions, get through that, and talk about some ideas. We're going to talk about national-level statistics, so we're going to talk about a number of communities throughout the United States, so we didn't necessarily specifically focus on, you know, local statistics here. We've done that in a number of various reports throughout this community a number of times. I'm going to go through what we consider to be the leading practices of affordable housing concerns in our community. We're going to talk a little bit about Lynchburg's prior experience, some policy recommendations, as well as the next steps. So, from a perspective of what this project is, one thing I want to be very clear about is that this project is a report on our research, on findings of what cities are doing throughout the United States that when they're trying to enact policies that improve housing affordability in their community. What this is not is a strategic sort of housing action plan for the city of Lynchburg, right? So, we, there might be things that we learn from this, and as we continue to go forward, if you think about the recommendations that we make, you'll learn, hopefully learn some, well, we've certainly all learned a lot of things from this project, hopefully you can glean some things as well. There's a tremendous number of materials that are out there that we can learn about, you know, affordable housing concerns. But the big thing here is that ultimately, even though you're going to read about a lot of things that places have done, there's really no silver bullet in how we address housing concerns, right? So, we, as Councilmember Helgason said, of course, income is a component of that, but there's also a number of other, you know, policies and projects that are out there that have worked in places very successfully. But those places are inherently different than Lynchburg, because it's a different community. And so, there are really no, ultimately, no silver bullets that we can look to and say, "Okay, so, you know, Chattanooga did this, so we just need to do exactly that." We need to take, ultimately, we need to take a look at what the Lynchburg context is, learn from other places, and if we want to do this work, if council decides that we want to do this work, we can learn from what they've done and alter their different programs that other places have done to make things better. So, just a little bit of background on some of the studies that have been done in the past. As you're aware, you've been, you've learned about a lot of them, right? So, there's been several initiatives to study housing affordability in this community. If you look at the agenda summary that's in your packet, you know, there's five or six different studies that have been done, but just a couple of them here. In 2012, city council endorsed an assessment of the housing, of the housing conditions in the city. And sort of long story short in that, the primary recommendation or primary finding of that was that there was no clear leader in housing affordability issues in this community. And so, from that, city council endorsed the formation of the Regional Housing Collaborative. I think many of our colleagues are with us today. And so, that was, that was sort of the primary goal there, to create a clear leader of who's doing housing issues in this community. Beginning in 2014, the five-year consolidated CDBG and Home Plan began to address a number of recommendations that city council has acted on over the last number of years, which you can see on your screen, but everything from increasing the number of owner-occupied housing units to infrastructure. And these are, these are concerns that are addressed or monitored every year when you adopt and take a look at the annual action plan. And we certainly would be remiss if we did not at least discuss the Bridges to Progress Task Force Group. As you're aware, we've had this, the Housing Collaborative Group has been in existence, you know, prior to the creation of the Bridges Program and ultimately the merging. But ultimately, eventually, this group was awarded a $20,000 grant to study housing stability in the community, and that's some of the work that you've seen as we've gone forward. So, lots of work that has been done in the city to talk about housing affordability concerns from the perspective of, you know, are people able to access housing in this community? And so, we don't, we don't want to reinvent the wheel on that, we want to learn from those things, but we want to use that as context for how we go forward. So, talking about the definition of what affordable or attainable housing is, and, you know, one of the things that we really should talk about and have a conversation about is that there are quite a few people in the world, right, that think about the concept of affordable housing and have sort of very negative, have a very negative feeling about that. And so, in order to respond to that, we might want to be thinking about sort of attainable housing, right? So, making sure that people, the housing that exists is attainable at the levels either we have for income, or that we have opportunities to grow that. So, for the purposes of our research, for what we did today, we talked about both very low-income housing, so people for, whose income is very low, but we also talked about sort of middle-income housing, or housing for people with sort of middle incomes, we might call it workforce. We don't like that term necessarily, and I'll talk about that, about that in just a second, but we just want to make sure we're thinking about housing, the housing market concerns that we have throughout the community for a diverse group of income earners throughout the city. So, just to define what low income is, the federal government, through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, has defined low income as essentially anybody making less than 80% of the area median income in that community, right? So, there's different levels, and you can see what that means on the screen for a family of four in Lynchburg. And so, that gives you an idea of what people are living on if we're talking about them in terms of being at those lower income levels. Now, we talk about workforce housing, and one thing we want to be clear about is that oftentimes, people who are low-income are certainly in the workforce, right? People are still, were certainly working. But when we talk about workforce housing, we're talking about generally people that are making between 80 and 120% of the area median income. So, these are sort of your middle-class workers. And so, we want to make sure, as we, as we think about the people who are in that, in that income range, oftentimes, these are people that are providing the vital services that we rely on in order to make a community, right? So, we're talking about teachers, police officers, firefighters, nursing assistants, laundry and restaurant workers. These are people that are serving the community that we're in, and oftentimes, in places throughout the United States are not able to afford to live in the community that they serve. And so, that...
Mr. Rodica, I'm sorry to interrupt you, because you said 80 and 120. For those who are at home, I'm not sure if this is being shown on the screen, or if you are, can you say the dollar amounts, please?
So, the 80% is $50,800 a year, and 120 would be $76,000 a year for a family of four. So, just so we're clear about that.
And below the 5800 is considered low income on the other screen?
For a family of four.
Below 50,800 for a family of four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's the HUD definition, and that's how we, you know, there's lots of definitions out there, but that's what the standard conversation is about. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of data there, there's a lot of numbers that we provide, but we want to, we want to think about this in terms of a more humanized context. So, as a particular example, let's talk about a nursing assistant who earns about $23,000 a year. So, this person has two children, and say this person is making 40% of, spending 40% of her income on housing every year. If that housing, the percentage that she's spending on housing is reduced to 30%, which I know you've heard that, that number before, is sort of the level that we want to make sure people aren't spending more of, you could make potentially three, a down payment and maybe three car payments, you could afford two years potentially of school lunch at city schools in Lynchburg, or in fact, you could pay for a quarter of your LPN degree at the Central College for Nursing. And so, doing that, to Councilmember Helgason's point, would potentially increase her income by $18,000 a year. So, greatly improving the opportunities that that person has to improve their income and then continue to grow. So, that, you know, certainly is a, you know, certainly is a hypothetical, but it does hopefully kind of humanize the conversation to at least some extent.
So, you know, the HUD definition of 80% of the median income, so now we'll just think about our median income in the city of Lynchburg growing. So, the city of Lynchburg's median income grows, but now that 80% has now moved up because the median moved up. And so, some of this is a point of never attaining. It's almost kind of built into the formula. If you're looking at 80% of a, you know, when people's income goes up, everybody should be happy. But if we're going to say now, because of the median moved up, 80% of that median is now higher than it used to be, even though the people may be more happy because they have more income, but they're still in this low-income classification because of that formula.
Yeah, absolutely. So, none of this, none of this is in a vacuum, right? So, we have to make sure we're thinking about this in all of the context of how the, how the housing market is changing, how income characteristics are changing over time, and we have to continue to sort of pivot any strategies that we might want to take based on, based on those concerns. So, just talking about some national sort of gap statistics of housing issues in the community, housing issues throughout the United States, on the left side, it is a little bit difficult to see, but you will see on the left side, the red line or the top line is over time, over the last 40 years or so, the median household, house, housing prices, right? So, how much it costs to build a house and live in a house, you see that there's a pretty extensive growth. The green line is the average median household income and how it has changed over that same period of time, all adjusted for inflation. So, as you can see, there's a, there's a growing gap in between what it costs to be in a home versus what people are actually taking home on a, on a weekly or monthly basis. So, that suggests to you that, you know, perhaps as the, as the market has changed, the wages may not have necessarily continued forward. The other concern is about how, at certain times, particularly as the recession took hold, the number of housing starts, so the supply of housing reduced, and in fact, the percentage of housing that was produced that were, that are single-family housing, that is single-family housing, the mix of that has reduced significantly over time. It's increased somewhat in the last few years as, as we've emerged out of the recession, but it still is not, as a percentage of all the housing starts, it is less than what it once was. So, those are just some, some sort of national context for you to show what people are dealing with throughout the United States. So, what are places doing about this? There's, there's quite a number of ideas that are out there. You know, we, we developed a, you know, research project to do, to go out and learn about as many places as we possibly could, see what places are doing, see places that are successful, see places that are like us, see places that are bigger than us, see places that are smaller than us, trying to learn from a variety of different communities and what people are doing so that we can learn from them, not so that we can do exactly what they've done, but so that we can take what they, what they've learned and apply it potentially, if that's what city council wants to do, apply it here, if that's, if that's our goal. So, the first best, first leading practice that I think is really important, and is certainly extremely near and dear to my heart, and I think is a concern that I have with this conversation in general, is that we need to develop, and every community needs to develop, a much more robust understanding of factual, actual factual data that triangulates the information about the housing market and provides much greater context for how well people are doing and able to afford various houses, various housing opportunities in the community. So, and a great example of this, we think, is in Arlington County, Virginia. They have a model where they track 60-plus indicators evaluating the supply of housing, access, the sustainability of the housing market that they have, as well as what their trust fund is doing, and the quality of housing, and a variety of other issues. And so, certainly, we would not want to look at probably a 60-indicator program, but that's something that we could learn from as we go forward. We also think that because there are so many communities out there that are dealing with housing affordability concerns, so really any city of any consequence in the United States is at least having a conversation about housing affordability in their community. And so, as a result, there's a variety of national networks that we, that places should engage in, engage with, so that they can, we can learn from standard policies, we can learn from programs that people have done. So, you can see a variety of organizations that are here that are available to communities like us, where we're trying to figure these things out and we can learn from. In fact, the third one there, Enterprise Community Partners, did our initial housing study in previous years. The next thing we think needs to be done, and what we've learned from throughout the, throughout, you know, lots of places that are out there, is we need to make sure we inventory and map the existing, existing affordable housing opportunities. And that doesn't necessarily mean that just because this building is here, we need to preserve that building, but we do at least need to make sure that we're thinking about preserving the, the number of units or the opportunities for units. But we don't have to do this alone. There's lots of partners that are out there that want to be a part of this, and a great example of this is in Chicago with the Cook County Preservation Compact. And this is a group of both the city and county, but it's also a variety of developers and other human services organizations that are funding money into making sure that we're preserving opportunities for housing that might be there. And so, if you're going to do that, you also have to make sure that you're creating an acquisition fund, or putting, putting together money to, to preserve existing housing, right? So, we're going to preserve it, but we also need to make sure we have money to do so. So, an example of this is Denver's Transit Oriented Development Fund. In 2009, the city of Denver, the city and county of Denver put together a $2.5 million fund that was ensuring that housing or land within a quarter-mile of transit hubs, so active bus, bus stops and that sort of thing, were preserved potentially for affordable housing. So, it may not necessarily be you're constructing. Yep.
So, thank you for the white paper. I wanted to read it this afternoon, but I had to work for a living instead of read this. I'm sorry. I really want to, and I will. Can you explain what that program actually is? How are they preserving housing? Is that through subsidized rent payments? Is that acquisition of the housing become governor-owned housing, or what is it?
So, there's a couple of different, there's a land bank component of it, but there's, which is basically you, you have, you're identifying these locations that are within a quarter-mile of high turnover bus stops or the light rail. So, you're preserving that land to eventually build something, or there are some places where...
So, who owns the land?
The, the, I believe that there's a, I don't know if it's the city or if it's the fund has an ability to own.
So, a non-private entity, or a public entity, or quasi-public entity owns it?
Yeah. So, by, so, we started out with, in 2009, with a $2.5 million initial investment from the city. This fund was able to leverage another $11 million, or by another $15 million by 2011 from private, public and pri, I'm sorry, private philanthropies and other organizations that are interested in housing opportunities. So, this is just an example of how a relatively smaller investment from local government was able to leverage a tremendous amount more money to do a variety of things that we have, that we want to do. You know, we also, as we're thinking about how we get the money into this, you know, oftentimes, we're like, you know, we have so many, we have so many obligations out there, how could we ever come up with a way to actually pay for these things when we have so many other competing demands? So, we think that localities that are successful with this have identified innovative and dedicated revenue sources that are specifically for housing concerns. So, a couple of great examples are the Philadelphia Housing Trust Fund, which they, the city of Philadelphia established a surcharge onto document recordings. So, if you want to get married, if you want to have a baby, and you're, and you need to make a, you know, recordation in the courthouse, then you pay a surcharge onto this, and it helps pay for affordable housing issues in the community. And by fiscal year 2015, the city was generating about $10.5 million annually for affordable housing issues that are there. In Miami, the, the city, Miami-Dade County, put together a component of their, their GO bond issuance, $195 million for affordable housing issues, and then there's a variety of other, other opportunities that we can read about in the paper. So, what specifically that we do, and what specific revenue source that it is, we can have that conversation, but, you know, if you want to be serious about doing this work, then there probably has to be some sort of dedicated revenue, so we're pushing this, pushing this down the road, if this is what you want to do. The next thing is, we, you know, we talk a lot about, we've heard probably a lot about the idea of inclusive zoning. So, this is changing the, the characteristics of our zoning ordinance to make sure that either we are incentivizing or we are mandating affordable housing opportunities in your, in our, in our communities. So, two examples that we have here is Boulder, Colorado, which takes a very regulatory, mandatory structure and says you have to have 20% of the units in any new development that you have that are going to be affordable for the, for the community. That's a little different than what Austin, Texas has done. They provided more of an incentive structure, which is really more related to guidance documents that they have, and if you do X, Y, and Z number of things, you can get density bonuses and things like that, that are available. And along those lines, we talk about other places that have done a variety of incentives, such as Longmont, Colorado, which is dealt with improving opportunities for water and sewer hookup fees and things like that, as well as Asheville, which has an accessory dwelling unit, so the grandmother or mother-in-law suite potentially that improves those opportunities. So, so, we're thinking about how do we streamline, streamline and incentivize the development process for folks that may need it. And the last two here, I think are both pretty interesting, and the first one that we, that's on the slide is this, this concept of making sure that we are investing, making holistic investments in neighborhoods with very specific purposes in mind. So, we mentioned on this slide, Charlotte West, Charlotte Renaissance West Community, which is a mixed-income development on the west side of the city of Charlotte. They have connected both a mixed-income development with a, with a STEM academy in one of their neighborhood centers that's next door. So, we're thinking about wrapping around services for folks who need various, thank you for that, who need various services in their lives that will help them achieve improving their income, improving their educational opportunities and a variety of other things, other things. So, we're not just saying this traditional public housing method where we're just going to build this big place and people are going to live there, and we're not really taking, taking care of the variety of other issues that are going on in their life. So, we're having these wraparound programs that say that are, that are where people live and ensuring that we have great opportunities, not only just in schools and everything else, but in their neighborhoods. So, thinking about holistic investments in their community. I had the opportunity last year to visit the city of Orlando, which is, has done something similar on a redevelopment site. So, it's sort of interesting things that are there. And the last one we'll mention is, we think we need to develop a, cities that are more successful, or that are successful are developing education and communications campaigns to talk about what resources are already existing, and how do we continue to improve the usage of those? So, Polk County, Iowa's Can I Be Your Neighbor campaign is both, of course, a media camp, media campaign, but they're also doing things like holding concerts in neighborhoods that are designed for affordable housing and inviting people from throughout the community to be a part of those concerts and these events, right? So, you're trying to humanize and normalize the people who live in those neighborhoods so that people throughout the community can really get a good understanding of what people are living, where people are living, and that, that people are people. So, in the, in the text of the white paper, hopefully you'll have the opportunity to read at some point, that there, you know, there's a variety of other interesting programs that cities have tried and, that might be interesting for us to consider. Just as a couple of examples, the city of Newark, New Jersey, has developed a teacher's village, so specifically for teachers in their community. Chapel Hill, North Carolina, has, has developed programs to incentivize their town employees to live within the town where it's extremely expensive. And then, places like Akron have residential tax abatements that, that are, that are helpful. So, we talked about all kinds of places throughout the United States that have done all kinds of interesting things, but I think it's really important for us to go back and look at what has, what has Lynchburg actually done, because Lynchburg has done a tremendous number of things. It has done a tremendous number of things right. And so, we certainly don't need to reinvent the wheel or start from scratch, but there are potentially opportunities to go forward. And so, talking about some of the things that we've done previously, first of all, you know, Lynchburg, we're really good at creating partnerships, and probably the, the great one that... one that we have with us today, that the Regional Housing Collaborative is, is an example of that, and it should continue to be a leading voice in, in housing in this community. We've also been able, because of those partnerships, we've been able to leverage a variety of funds as a community, from the Housing Choice vouchers to low-income housing tax credit, CDBG grants, all, you know, all these things that are available that we have done, we have used really extensively throughout this community. So there's partnerships that are already available to us that we've done really well with, really well with. We've also done a number of really innovative things that are sort of outside of the traditional block that we think are really successful. We have, so the city has created innovative local programs, the real estate rehab program, the infill development program, you know, the rental and property inspection program. You know, those are all, you know, programs that while it may not necessarily be, we may not necessarily be thinking about them as affordable housing programs, they do make the housing market better and make it more available to people regardless of income. So you might be thinking about the real estate rehab program. Well, isn't that about, you know, improving the quality of housing? And it certainly is. And we want people to be able to access quality housing to, you know, be able to, but also to be able to afford it, right? So if we were to incentivize in some way, improving the quality of housing, well, the value of that's going to go up. And so ultimately then, you know, if I'm a low-income person, I'm not going to be able to afford it. So the incentive that we've provided is we've, we've, we've said, you know, not only do you, are we going to help, you're going to, you're going to make improvements to the quality of housing, but you're also not going to have to continue to pay taxes on the higher level. So we make sure that the, that, that new quality housing is now still and continues to be available for people who are maybe of lesser means. So it improves that, that quality of housing. There's a couple of important programs that we, we've, we want to look at. And the first one is the Housing Choice voucher program. And you'll see, you can see the distribution of the use of that program. This is 2011 data, so it's a little bit dated, but there's really not any reason to think that it's significantly different today. One thing we, we just would want to point out is that one of the goals of this program is to try to disperse the use of housing vouchers throughout the city and neighborhoods where there are appropriate services. So access to transit, childcare, recreation facilities, you know, et cetera. And so when we look at the distribution of where those programs have been used, you know, you can take that for what you will. And so it is, it's been a very highly-used program, but we certainly can continue to, to grow that and make it even better. Our CDBG and home projects, in the last five years, there have been 135 housing units that have been assisted. About 77 of those have created new units, and you can see the distribution throughout the city. If you can't, hopefully you can see it on your screen.
I noticed, I was looking at the rental rehabilitation spots, and there must be another program other than the Housing Authority that runs rental rehabilitation, because none of ours, the Housing Authority, are outside the green area. So what other group is doing rental rehabilitation?
So there's, there's people, you know, lots of people can, are available to.
CDBG and home rental.
CDBG. I don't know the answer to that question. Do you know?
Link, can I do it?
So we can, we can learn about that.
Okay.
Yep. So then the real estate rehab program, which we talked about a little, a little bit more. What you'll notice is that only 37% of the rental rehab programs, program, projects have occurred in a, in a neighborhood that has an average housing value of $150,000 or less. So if you see the, the darker marks there, you can see where, where it's been used. And as a housing affordability concern, you know, again, you can take from that what you will as far as how that, that project, that program has been used and how we might want to continue to grow that. So again, lots of really great things.
I have a follow-up on this one also, because I couldn't make heads or tails out of this at the start. All right. Rental rehabilitation. Now, these are not CDB home on this one. The previous slide was CDBG and home, correct? So this is all rehabilitation for rental units?
Yeah, so the real estate rehab program, which is, there's, there's rules, of course, but they're, it's much more open to people who are making improvements to their, their residences, right? So they basically.
So I'm not familiar with this program at all.
Yeah, so we're essentially, and I don't want to get too far into it, but essentially we're capping the, how we're assessing the, the value of that home for 15 years. And we say, if this, if this property is valued at $100,000 before you go into this program and you do a bunch of rehab and improvements, and it's, then it's valued at $200,000, then you're going to be taxed for the next 15 years on $100,000.
That's a real estate tax abatement program, right?
Yeah. Am I, am I speaking right?
The rental rehab.
Residential rehab program, yeah.
Rental should be replaced with residential around the left.
Okay.
I think that's the confusing.
So this is residential rehabilitation?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that makes a whole lot more sense.
Yeah, sorry. I can see why that would be confusing, yeah.
And what are NBHDs and, what are MBHDs?
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Neighborhoods, specific neighborhoods. So on the, on the chart that, that community development has that lists all the specific neighborhoods, those are the neighborhoods outlined?
Yeah, so these, these are the, the, the neighborhoods you see there. We have different definitions of neighborhoods, which is another project we're working on. But these neighborhoods are the city assessor neighborhoods, which are loosely based on the development patterns of the city. So it's just, it's just a geographic definition.
And so what relevance does that have to this map?
So the, the point of this is that in, in, in look, in parts of the city where we have neighborhoods that have a, have an average housing value or median housing, housing value of $150,000 or less. So sort of that, sort of, you might call that sort of the workforce housing opportunities.
So the, the neighborhoods block is really neighborhoods with averages assessed value of $150,000 or less?
Yeah, which you can see there, yep.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
All right.
I still don't understand this, the relevance of this specific slide. If it now, that word, you know, I thought for rental rehabilitation, so if somebody is improving a piece of property so they can rent it to somebody, but now it does have nothing to do with rental. Can you back up the slide?
You mean you're not improving the properties?
So somebody has a house, and the house is in a, in a great neighborhood, but this house is a terrible house. It used to be our spot blight program. So somebody comes in and says, even though the neighborhood is fabulous, the neighborhood has $200,000 worth of value each house. Now this one particular house that's worth $20,000, this doesn't apply because or, because it's capped out at something, or I don't understand that?
The point of this slide is to say that only 37% of the projects that have done what you've just said have been in neighborhoods where, that are reasonably affordable for a middle-income type person, right? That, that $150,000 is, I mean, that's sort of anecdotal, right? That doesn't necessarily mean anything from where we are. But that, but I think we can, we can all agree that that's a reasonably priced.
But spot blight was sort of the opposite. So spot blight said, here's the average value of the houses, and here's one particular house that is a blight to the neighborhood. So this one is valued at 10% of whatever that average is. Let's figure out a way that it can get, kind of get back on the tax rolls and be renovated and fixed. So that's a good thing. This is, it's the opposite.
No, we, we, we think this is a good program. I'm not, I guess I'm not sure what you're asking, but I guess we, we think this is a good thing. We just want to make sure, and we'll get to this in a few minutes, but we want, we want this program to be used in, in the parts of the city that might be more available to somebody sort of more in middle income already, as opposed to in neighborhoods that have a much higher median household income as it is. Does that make sense?
This shows us where the real estate values are increasing in a town, because people are, do rehabilitation projects because they don't want to be the worst house on the street. So they improve their house. So that's why you see along Rivermont there. Look at Lower Rivermont. You must have a, you must have an increasing housing market there, because you, look at all that, all that rehab work that's happened in that area. On the other, on the flip side, nobody wants to be in the most expensive house on the street because your valuations aren't going to show for it. And that's why you have less in, in the areas of $150,000.
So when we think about housing affordability in, in those sort of middle-income neighborhoods, we want to make sure, again, we're not just talking about affordability, we're also talking about quality of housing. We, you know, we don't want, you know, if you're, if you're living in somewhere that you're paying 200 bucks a month for, but the roof's falling in, that's not really great either, right? We want to make sure if you're paying a reasonable rate and that it's a decent, decent house to live in.
So this program is for residents, so this is homeowner-occupied rehabilitation projects?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, right? So what, I hear one way of the way it's being read. So what I'm seeing is that if I, if you own a home in $150,000 or less assessed value average in the neighborhood, that you're not getting the attention you need through this program. If the owner chooses that I own a house in a neighborhood that is not valued at the, what I think it should be valued at or what I, you know, so I'm not going to invest in that property, is what I'm hearing. But it, Councilmember Wright?
I'm sure there are a lot of ways, like a lot of inferences we could draw from, from this graph, one of which might be, right, that there's growing inequity in our community, growing income inequality in our community, where folks on the upper end of the spectrum can afford to invest in their homes, where folks who are lower income or middle income cannot afford to take advantage of programs like this. That also might be a reasonable way, I think, to, to, to look at this graphic.
Right. There are a couple of ways to look at it. There's one way, but then when you look at the assessed value, there's another way to look at it if the property values average are under the 150, is what I'm getting to. Thank you, Councilmember.
So I think what, I think what we're getting at here is, and I'll talk about this in a couple of slides, but, but I, no, I think what we're, what we're trying to get at here is that we have a number of programs that are, that could potentially use, could potentially be used more effectively than, they're great programs, they're doing really good things now, but they could be, continue to be used even further.
But these are programs that people voluntarily use to fix up their own house or apparently not their own rental house, right?
So, so I guess my, my point in this, and I, I don't want to get into a debate, debate necessarily about that, but I, I would say that, I'll just give you an anecdote. You know, a friend that I have in mind that I, that I know from high school was in town and owns some houses in, in the community that rental houses, and he's been doing some improvements to the, to the home and whatever. And I said, well, have you looked at the real, you know, the residential rehab program to, you know, sort of help you with that? And he was like, what? You know, I didn't even know that existed, right? So the point here is that we need to make sure that we're communicating the really great existing programs that we have before we start making new programs that, that may not be necessary.
And another thing it accomplishes is you have to invest 50% of the value of the assessed value into the house. So it doesn't track any of that. So, anything below that. So if your house is assessed at $50,000 and you're putting in less than $25,000 worth of work into the house, which is a significant improvement to that house probably, it's not going to, it's not going to be qualified for the rental rehab.
But the point is people might have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's right. We need to make better use of the, the great programs we have. Okay, so all that as I say, we have a number, we've, we've learned from a lot of other places. We've learned about places, what people are, people are doing throughout the United States. So we have two primary recommendations that have come out of this, this research, right? So again, one of the things I'll say is that this is not a strategic housing plan for the city of Lynchburg. We, you know, we have not had enough time to do something like that. We, we think that needs to occur in the future, but that's not what this project is. But the first step in the, that we need to go forward with next, we think, is that there needs to be a very well-articulated vision that both the city council and the Housing Authority and, and all of our partners that are a part of that can, can get around. So are we, you know, the question is, what are the challenges that we really want to, to fix now? And what are the challenges that we can fix? Is this about a middle-income sort of workforce, you know, middle-class kind of, kind of conversation? Is this about low-income housing? Is it both? And what specifically about that are the things that we want to achieve? And so what that allows us to do is to develop interventions that may be something we already have that we need to communicate more, or maybe it needs to be a new program that we design that are, that, that, that can affect housing policy in, in our community that we have very specific needs for our community. And so we need to understand how, you know, housing policy affects and is affected by a variety of, of other socioeconomic, economic factors. And so one of the things we want to make sure of when we, when we talk about this, we want to make sure that we have a diverse, the opportunity for a diverse mix of citizenry in this community. We can't, we, we have to have a variety of, of different types of folks, and we can't, we can't make sure that, we, we have to make sure that sort of middle-income people aren't priced out of opportunities here, because we need people just like, those, those folks just like anybody else. And the second recommendation, second primary recommendation that we have is that we, we think that we need to expand the existing housing collaborative. Lots of great things going on, lots of great conversations, but we think we probably need to expand the number of people that are on there to include some of the, the people that can access the infrastructure to the housing, of the housing market that will make some of this stuff go along even better. So lending institutions, private residential developers, anchor institutions that, that are really key in the, in this conversation. So again, great things going on, but we think there's, there's other partners that need to be a part of that conversation. And that is based upon what it is that we want to achieve as an, as an organization. We have a number also of secondary recommendations, so we think those two need to go first. But after we define those, those ideas, then we need to, in, in that context, we need to work through different recommendations. So we think that we probably, if we want to be serious about housing policy in, in Lynchburg, if we want to do more than what we're doing now, if that is the case, then we think there needs to be a dedicated revenue source such as a housing trust fund that has some sort of dedicated revenue. We think we need to make sure we're identifying and preserving existing housing options that are out there. We need to develop, and again, this one is sort of near and dear to my heart, but very precise evaluation and measurement tools that allow us to, on an annual or even maybe, maybe even more frequent than that basis, how, what's going on in the housing market? And, and are people able to actually afford the housing that we have? And how is that affecting a variety of other issues in our community? So really thinking about those, that data, we, we need to build that out. We don't have that developed as it exists. As we discussed in detail, we think we need to improve, create a communications tool to improve the use of the existing tools. And very importantly, to enlist the help of a variety of other partners, such as developers and builders and design professionals, to help us understand what administrative burdens are in the way that's making, making the development of affordable housing not possible. So we need to make sure that we're, we're thinking through that and, and removing those administrative barriers where they do exist. We think we need to expand existing wraparound services for the, for the, for the locations that we have, for all people in, in, in our housing opportunities. One of the interesting things I hope you'll read about in the paper is thinking about public employee housing opportunities. So one of the things I mentioned before were about those middle-income earners, you know, teachers, firefighters, police officers. And you'll notice that a lot of those people work for us. And so lots of places throughout the United States have started to say, you know what? We want those people to be living here, and it's actually something that Lynchburg has tried on the teacher side of things before. But we think we need to be, we think down the road, we need to be thinking about, you know, why is it that people, lots of people who work for the city live outside of the city? And so there's a variety of reasons for that. And, and I'll tell you, you know, one of the really great moments in this conversation with the group we had, and was a, as a humbling moment for me, was I was complaining about, you know, why, why, why all these people live outside of the city? Why don't, why do they not live inside the city? And my colleague, Ganel Hart, who I can always rely on to give me good, good advice, said, you know, listen, there's a lot of people that work for us that, that we just don't pay enough to live in quality housing in the city. And that's sort of a firsthand look. And so that's, that's probably anecdotal, and that's probably, you know, it's not dated, maybe not totally data-driven, but that is something that, that we know is going on on an everyday basis. So we need to be thinking about that in some way. And finally, we need to be thinking about where there is, there are areas of lacking infrastructure that might help support construction. So there's areas that we know of that have been annexed into the city through time, that we have not installed the appropriate infrastructure, such as, you know, sewer and, and that sort of thing, that we need to be thinking about mitigating those barriers. And that's, that's an issue that we need to be thinking about regardless of this conversation as well. So what are our next steps? We would suggest that you, city council, hold a joint meeting sometime this fall with the redevelopment authority or the housing authority and some other, and other partners to, to discuss those two primary recommendations. Certainly, we also suggest that the CDBG and home consolidated plan include, consolidated plan for next year include a conversation, a community conversation about housing policy in our community. So I've thrown a lot of stuff at you this afternoon. So this is, this is the result of several months' worth of work that, again, this, this comes from a perspective that suggests that we, that the city wants to engage in more conversation or policy that addresses the housing market in, in our community. Again, that, that comes from a particular lens. If that's not the appropriate lens, we can do a different project. And, but, but, you know, I, I want to thank the, the team that, that developed this, put quite a bit of work into this, and, and we are pleased with what came out of it. But with. But would certainly take any questions that you might have, either, even further.
Thank you very much, Mr. Otaka. So I will first just turn to councilmembers. Thank you, let's say thank you first to the team. Thank you all for doing the work. I know it's been a couple of months, and the collaborative was waiting, and the department went back and retooled some things and researched a little bit more, so thank you to all of the departments that were involved with putting this together. And I want to say that, and then turn to Councilmember Wilder.
Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. It is very informative. I know we have talked about, in a prior conversation, about why there's so many townhouses being built versus single families. I know that's another discussion we're going to have about that, about which developers, what developers are saying to us. So this also, to me, kind of goes with it a little bit as well, where we can talk about what the developers are saying, why it's more better for them to build a townhouse versus any single-family houses. So I think this goes for also another discussion as well. So I appreciate having this discussion today for this project. One, one question you mentioned is about the zoning change that we could do, that would go to the discussion as well. What were some of those things you mentioned about some of the zoning changes we could do to assist that?
Yes, we talked a little bit about inclusionary zoning, which basically is essentially saying, you know, long story short, that we want to make sure that there's opportunities for a variety of different types of people to live in, in various neighborhoods. So we want, you know, we want to make sure, and that might be in apartment buildings or it might be actually in single-family residences, single-family neighborhoods. And so, so the two options, you know, the two, two projects we talked about were in Boulder, Colorado, which, you know, had a very strict mandate that said, if you do a development, or you build an apartment building, or you do pretty much anything in the city, if you're going to do housing, twenty percent of the units that have to be in there have to be affordable to that, that level. The, the sort of opposite side of the spectrum is Austin, Texas, which has much more of an incentive-based program that provides a set of guidelines that says, hey, if you do these things, then you can reduce, you know, and you get density bonuses and things like that. You can, you could build more units and things like that. As opposed, if you don't do them, then you, you can't do that. So you can potentially make more money doing that. So, so those are projects, or those are policies that, again, are, that, those are different communities, very, very different communities, and Lynchburg is even different from them. And so we might, you know, what we would say is, probably, what you'll notice on the recommendations is that we didn't include, you know, attacking inclusionary zoning right now. And because what we've, what we've learned is that it takes a tremendous amount of organizational infrastructure to make sure and continue to, continue to, to reevaluate and enforce those, those issues. And so you'll notice that that's not included as a recommendation right now, but it may be something that you want to look at in the future.
Thank you. And also, you mentioned about like a teacher village. Is that privately funded, or?
It's a public-private partnership in Newark. So I, I think, I think maybe the city owned the land, and then, and I may not be right, but I think, but there's, there were lots of private partners that are, that were involved in that.
Again, thank you for the, for the, for the presentation. Thank you to the committee also for working on that. I mean, it's just so enlightening to see what we as a community, what we can do together to support our community. The Bible, I don't know if I can quote the Bible or not, but the Bible says, the poor you have, you always. So we know that we're going to always have persons of low income in our community, or persons that we need to help get to the next level. And I've worked in the past with Habitat and Rush Homes, and they do some really great projects. So one thing you see is when persons are able to afford their own house, how their, how their life has really changed from self-esteem, from feeling better about themselves, from being with the pastor, back down to their children, to their family members. And I think this discussion, I think, is so important to have. I'm looking forward to the recommendation you mentioned about meeting with the, I think, Housing Authority Board and, and those other suggestions. I look forward to meeting with that group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Wright?
And to Councilmember Wilder's point, first, thank you. That goes without saying. It's, it's impressive, Councilmember Perro raised up the document, it's an impressive, impressive document. And, and a really sobering one. Two, and Councilmember, you know, Wilder talked about folks who, who, you know, the, the dignity that comes with, with being able to, to own or even rent a home. And we're not just talking about folks who are, are extremely low income, we're talking about people who work for the city, who are full-time employees of this municipality. You know, when, during the debate over the budget, we heard from a number of folks, firefighters' families, for example, and we had firefighters' families writing to us saying, we can't afford to own our own home. We have to live with our parents. We have to live outside of, of city limits. We want to live in the city, but we simply can't afford to do that based on the salary that, that we're earning. So I think this is, this is not just an issue about affordable housing, it's also a question of, of how we pay people. So I don't, I don't want to go too far down that road, but I do think it's worth, worth noting that, and that the stakes here are really high. So included in this white paper are some of the statistics that the collaborative shared with us a couple of months ago, including that almost forty-five-hundred families, households in Lynchburg spend fifty percent or more of their incomes on housing. And there's a shortage of two thousand three hundred and forty affordable homes in Lynchburg for the extremely low-income population, which means then the stakes are really high, because of people's lives right now. And I'm sorry, I don't want to get, I know I've said this before, I don't want to get preachy, but I think, I think we all recognize here, and I'm glad we do, that the stakes are really high. So I think it's, I think it's really impressive that we have this collection of, of talented people who joined us this evening, who are ready to partner with city council to work on this issue. I think it's obviously something that city council, you know, there's a lot of resolve in this room, and I think this body needs to match the resolve of the folks who have joined us here this evening, and commit to a long-term strategy to, to really deal with affordable housing here in Lynchburg. It's on us to level up to them, and so I'm certainly committed to doing that. So I'm grateful for everybody for joining us this evening and for this presentation.
Thank you. I think I saw Councilmember Haggelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, when I, when I read through this report, I started making lots of notes, and then I figured, well, now isn't the time to go through all of the, the specific details, because there's lots of things that I think we could learn from. You know, one of which, I know you have lots of comparisons with other municipalities and what they're doing over here, and, but also in your report, I read that Lynchburg used to not have people that had moderate incomes leaving the city. You said, what are we going to do about, you know, people, working families that are fleeing the city? So some of that, I think a better example, you know, sure, we can compare us to Chicago and Charlotte and all these different places, or we can say, what did we do as a city when people didn't leave the city? What did we do as, as a city prior to more, our poverty numbers being as high as they are? And so with that, I think that would be a better, you know, purview, because you're going to say, what did we specifically do? What policies did we set that actually did the opposite of what we really want? And that is, we want people with means in the city, and we don't want to be the place where people without means all come, because we've done a lot of things. I, I read on here from nineteen ninety to two thousand sixteen, all, you know, lots of stuff that was done, and very, and rents went up and income went down. This was at a time when we did all those programs that you mentioned, the CHIA, the CDBG, the, the housing rehab, the rental rehab, the programs for this and for that. And so with that, I think we got to really look back and say, is there something that we are doing that's actually doing the opposite of really what we want? Because, you know, quite frankly, government, I, I can appreciate Councilmember Wright saying that we need to do something. The problem is, in government, is you have the built-in intentional bureaucracy that is slow to move. We're talking about people, as you mentioned, people's lives, and their houses, and their, where they live and where they don't live. With that, it's a very personal choice, and it's about who owns the property, how much they're going to charge for rent, and, and all these things. And so, you know, I think if we can take a big picture of this and say, we can make Lynchburg a better place, I know we have our slogan of live, work, and play, somewhat similar, a little different, but Lynchburg will be a better place for those who work, for those who pay their bills, and for those who pay, obey the law. We can also have policies that do the opposite, that say, we, we want Lynchburg to be the worst place for people who don't work, for people who don't pay their bills, and people who don't obey the law. I also read in here lots of things about the, the eviction rate, you know, and I can appreciate the, the, again, the purview. Somebody may say, oh, the sympathetic to the person who got evicted, which I can greatly appreciate. The other problem is the landlord. I mean, I don't know if anybody's seen the process that they'd have to go through. Somebody has, they signed a contract that says, you agree to pay, and we agree to rent. Got a legal document that they say, here's what we're going to do. And when they don't do that, it hurts the person that owned that property that doesn't get paid. It hurts that person who now has to not only not get paid for what they were agreed to, they now have to pay an attorney to have to go through that long process of eviction. And when you see these numbers, again, I can sympathize with the people that are getting evicted, but we really have got to sympathize with the, the person who had the property, because sometimes after they have to go through that, I got a feeling they don't do it very, they won't do it again, because they spent a lot of money, they didn't get rent, and it's like, oh, my goodness, maybe this isn't what we want to do. And so that is maybe where you see some of those rehab aren't in the places that are low-income, because, I mean, I've talked with lots of attorneys who do represent landlords, and they, it's difficult. They get burned and they don't want to do it again. And so these numbers, you know, you can look at the compassion, but you've also got to look at the fact that somebody agreed to do something, and they should pay it. If they don't, they can, you know, we got to look out for our landlords as well, because of the fact that it, when the landlords don't have that property rented and income isn't coming in, values of that property stagnates, and it doesn't go up. So, again, lots of things in here, I'd really love to see us compare to ourselves, of policies that we've, you know, I see this number that Councilmember Wright just mentioned, you know, twenty-four-hundred shortage. You know, I've been on council a long time, there's been a lot that have been built in this interim, for the last fifteen years, and before that, even back to nineteen nineties, when there was probably very few. Sometimes the more that you build, it doesn't solve it, it actually has more people from the counties that said, hey, this is a great place, and let's go there. And so that is something that we've got to be very careful of if we want our city as a whole to grow and thrive. And I think that's what this is about, is not to just take advantage of one program, but to have our city as a whole thrive.
Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been doing a lot of research on, on this lately, and I've just finished, or actually, I'm about fifty pages from finishing a book called Eviction, that is really, that we're reading it on the board of the Housing Authority for discussion, and it tracks this problem, but it's really about housing in general. Now, that's set in nineteen, in two thousand six to two thousand, two thousand ten Milwaukee. And the more I'm reading about this, the more, I'm looking forward to seeing this, but what I'm hearing today is aligning with it, it's not so much as a availability problem, it's a social-economic problem. So your slide where the, the nursing assistant making twenty-three thousand dollars a month, in Lynchburg, Virginia, there's no way that that person should be paying seven hundred and sixty dollars a month for housing, because on one, one site, one property management site in Lynchburg, there are twelve houses that rent below seven hundred dollars a month. So what's, and I think she should be running right at, I lost my calculator reset, but twenty-three, I think it was somewhere around six hundred dollars a month, she could get a two-bedroom, or she, he, whomever, get a two-bedroom apartment or house for, should be well under that.
So I appreciate what you're saying. Don't, don't take the example as gospel, right? That was just sort of trying to humanize.
But, right, but it brings up the point that I think there is affordable housing in Lynchburg available. I believe that the problem people can't get into it is because they have poor credit. They've been evicted. They have felonies on their, things that disqualify them from being, from a landlord wanting to place them in their house. Now, remember, besides the public housing, or the housing choice, excuse me, besides public housing, all rental is a business.
Sure.
And so the landlord's not in it for charity. The landlord's in there to increase the value of their assets in some cases, and hopefully in, in most cases, they're trying to increase the value of their assets, and some, they're just trying to bleed cash out of it. But, and, but it's always a business. Now, housing choice voucher, that, that's a good program. I know that the HUD is moving in that direction and promoting more housing choice voucher programs.
I feel the same way.
I thought that was one of those, oh, you've gone to an infected website sounds. Made me wonder what you're doing over there, John. So, so it, back into social economic issues, as a landlord, I'm not going to be willing to rent to somebody that isn't going to pay the rent.
Sure.
Because it costs almost a year, it's at least a quarter's worth of rent, if not two quarters' worth of rent, meaning a quarter of a year or two, or half of a year, to restore a house and turn it over and get it ready for the next rental.
Yeah.
So you lose fifty percent from the get-go if somebody stays there a year, because it's going to cost a significant amount of money to turn that, turn that property over, especially if people, and you see a lot of this, tear your, tear your place up, and you can't recover that. So I'm, I'm against putting undue pressure on landlords to decrease the value of their, of their property, because what that does, and Mr. Haggelson is exactly right, it's going to decrease the, the value of the real estate in that area, which is, that's our primary revenue source for the city of Lynchburg, is the value of that real estate. We need to be inciting, or in, in, incentivizing, would be a better word, not incite, incentivizing investments in those neighborhoods. So if you, to that, to that graphic that showed the investments in properties around, I think that's really an indicator of where the development is happening in Lynchburg. And you saw a significant amount of, of development between Columbia, Columbia Avenue and Rivermont Bridge. And that area is a low to moderate income area, and to see that type of growth or investment property there shows that property values are going up, which should be a long-term good forecast for the city. You also see it in the areas above College Hill, or between, I guess, I would say, more of Courthouse Hill and a couple of streets beyond, there's some more there. Of course, there are a significant amount downtown, in downtown Lynchburg. Also, we tend to think, because this is the area where we're working, that, that rental rates are consistent with the rates downtown. They're not.
Sure.
The downtown rates for rental rates are an absolute anomalous, anomalous, anomaly? Thank you. Absolute anomaly. Yeah, they're just different. Thank you. And, and that's driving the median and driving the mean. So, and, and that, that stat, that was in the paper the other day, as well as in the July, June, January eighth documentation, the sort of fourteen percent increase from two thousand nine, two thousand, excuse me, from nineteen ninety to two thousand sixteen. It said that it was clear that the, that the income on that was inflation adjustment. Is that fourteen percent increase? Is that inflation adjusted as well?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. All right. So, well, that would be one of my questions. Are we, I'll get about apples to apples. Because, because fourteen percent increase over twenty-six years, not much. I was wondering what our, our city taxes have increased in the same amount of time. When I talk to, and this is anecdotal evidence also, when I talk to firefighters and police officers, ask why don't, they don't live in the city, they say the taxes are too high.
Yep.
Now, so that's a, that is a, that's a real item also, and we've discussed that around and around. We can't get any hard evidence on that, but I'd love to see it. And I think Councilmember Nelson, who is, I just heard, recovering very nicely from his, from his surgery and feeling better and better, and who's watching him right now, he is seeing a lot of that, he has seen a lot of that in his real estate closing practice, because he's asked that question. Be nice if we could document something like that. So my point is all this, I'm becoming more and more skeptical, skeptical of what the city is supposed to do in this area. I understand the need to, you know, the desire to help people, but people also have to help themselves. And if we take the position that we're going to help them more than they help themselves, then- then we're just going to be a magnet for more people coming in and end up being like San Francisco.
Sure.
And we can't, we cannot afford that and we don't want it. What we need to do is make sure that people have the ability to find employment and, and to be employed and be successful. Because that's the common denominator in the book, in that book Evicted. Nobody in that book has a job. And we've got to figure out how to make sure that we've got, we've got, that people are able to get the job and increase the income. Now, I think, Mr. Verchek, you were talking about, we were talking about this before the meeting. I know that not everybody on the council is going to read the book Evicted, but you've, you've seemed to have identified a couple of WebExes, or not WebExes, but Ted Talks?
There are several videos of the author of Eviction that are available, and I'd be happy to find one that I think is the most relevant and send it to you for your review.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, a couple, a couple of things, if I could just respond, I think, so I appreciate those points. I think they're, they're good points, and I think, Mr. Higginson, you made some good points, too. I think the one thing to think about in all this is that none of this, none of these issues exist in a vacuum, right? They, you know, housing is affected by, and is, affects and is affected by a variety of socioeconomic factors. And so, and again, a lot of this comes from the perspective that you bring, is whether or not the city should be involved in this or not. And that's reasonable, people can, can disagree about, about those conversations. You know, we'll look to the, the places that have done what we call purpose-built communities. We mentioned the one in Charlotte, there was one in Orlando, that have tried, and you may not, you may disagree that this is our role, but organizations have tried to help people deal with their, their issues that make it difficult for them to be successful tenants, right? So, they, maybe they have a criminal record, maybe they don't have, you know, they just don't have the resources internally to be able to pay the rent every month, whatever the issues are, right? And so, again, reasonable people could disagree about whether or not it's the city government's role, or some private nonprofit role, or whoever's role it is, to sort of help people grow out of that. And that's one of the recommendations, or one of the leading practices we've talked about, is it's to say, you know, maybe places that are using their existing assets, like their community centers, to, to do wraparound services like that, might do exactly what you're saying, is helping people get out of that cycle. And so, you may or may not, again, think that that's something that we should do, and that's a, that's a reasonable conversation that we should, we should have. But I think that, I think that that, what you're, what you're saying, I think, about the socioeconomics, is consistent with what a lot of places are thinking about as well.
Two other things I'd like to bring up really quickly. What, what Councilmember Higginson said was correct about the other building, the other cities that we're compared, that we're compared to, they're all high-cost-of-living cities.
Yeah.
We're, we're not a high-cost-of-living city. Second, second point, I got pricing today on a building that I'm trying to redevelop, that I want to cut, turn into four apartments, which, by the way, does not conform with city code, so I've got to figure out how to do it that makes sense for city code, which means I'm going to have to have one office and three apartments. They're big apartments, though, because the building, it's an old building and it, it aligns itself. So, we're talking about 1,000-square-foot apartments and 1,000-square-foot, 1,000-square-foot office space. You can't rent office space right now, okay? The quote I got for interior work only doing that was $600,000. That's $150,000, $150 per foot.
Yeah.
So, what am I going to have to rent that building out to make it work? I can't.
Right.
I can't. So, even if I rent $1,000 per month for each floor, which is not attainable, based, you know, you don't rent a two, you know, a two-story walk-up for $1,000 a, $1,000 a month, you can't make that sort of investment. So, you've got to keep the business model in mind on this, because it's driving everything.
Yeah, totally agree.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Thank you very much for your report, and I think the report speaks for itself. And I think we've sort of lost something here. We started talking about, maybe this report is directed at people who are felons and unemployed, and really, the report was directed at people who are the working, who are working and have jobs, and still, and still, we are not able to provide homes in this community that they can afford. And I think it's something that we really need to start looking at. And I don't think that we can go back to what we did 30 years ago and go using old policies that are not going to work in today's environment. I mean, you know, we, we have changed. Our city's growing, that's great, and it's going to grow even more. And we're going to be presented with more and more challenges as far as housing is concerned. And I think it would behoove us to take some action at some point. And it's not for people that are not working or don't care to work, it's for all of our community. And what do we really want to look like going forward?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan, I think everyone has commented, so I'm going to say a few comments, and then if someone else has something to say, they can say it behind me. I think that, you know, I've taken a few notes for what we have talked about in this conversation. I know I sit on the Housing Authority, so first I would like to ask that the meeting be scheduled for City Council to have with the Housing Authority. So, if you, I see the Executive Director in the room, so I'm sure we could get that together very quickly, or with the city, everybody's schedule in mind. And I also know that we have a lot of practitioners in the room who are working with people in the housing, a lot of our partners, a lot of those people who are working with people who are trying to go to work every day, take care of their families and still can't afford, and I see them jumping out of their skin at what's being said here, because I'm jumping out of my skin. But, just to be able to speak on behalf of those faces I see in the audience, I think that we do have the responsibility to look at how we can improve in all areas with the recommendations that you all made, and how do we go beyond that? And I look at, we also had a report from the Housing Authority from, I believe it was the CHIA Coordinator, am I correct? Ms. Bacon, thank you. Who said a lot of who she's seeing now with housing issues are our seniors. Folks who have worked, folks who are older in our community, folks who have retired at an income level maybe at a time when they thought that they could make it. And now, they are faced with medication costs, they are faced with increased utility costs, they are faced with costs that cause them to become homeless and/or at risk for losing their homes. So, what do we do about the seniors and those who are disabled, who are on the fixed incomes, who won't think to go back to work again? So, I understand how we can narrow the argument in on people who we think don't work, but a lot of the numbers I saw for incomes would classify the people who are even working for the city. And then, when we say that they don't work, I think the people working for us work. Would everyone agree? Councilmembers, would you agree? I'm asking for yes or no.
I think it works ridiculous.
Well, they work, they pay their bills, and as far as I know, to come to work every day, they're not going to jail. But they still fall under the income levels that we're talking about of people who need additional housing stock for their affordability. So, I don't want to narrow the argument to say that folks who work for us and make less than $50,000 don't count, and we're not going to be humane in this conversation with them to say, oh, well, you know, no. People are working every day and can't live off $10 an hour. Now, we can-
They absolutely can't.
Well, you try go and get a rent apartment, $10 an hour, and they can make choices. I'm not trying to make people's choices about how many kids they have, I'm not trying to make choices about which neighborhoods and where they want to live. I know that the housing stock can be improved in this city, and as a member of the Housing Authority, it is our responsibility, since the Housing Authority is an arm of the City Council, to affect the conversation. And so, that is what my comments seek to do. We have had different committees, the Bridges to Progress, the Housing Collaborative, and there's also a bi-annual CENTRA Survey Health Assessment that has a housing committee also, that says it's an issue in our community. So, collectively with all of the data, collectively at looking at how we can work to more, toward more workforce housing, more mixed-income housing, and looking at all of the development in our city, I think we have a responsibility to take all of it and make plans going forward that help those persons who go to work every day in our city. If we want to help them through workforce, that's the next conversation coming. But right now, we owe it to everyone to have the conversation on how we improve going forward. I'm not trying to narrow the argument to isolate it out, to say, let's not talk about it, because people don't work, don't pay their bills, and they got felonies.
You obviously haven't read the book, have you?
You know what? I know I have people in this city making under $50,000 who are at risk for affordable housing. And I have the responsibility to those people to help fix the situation and/or at least improve it. So, that's what I'm going to do, which is why I'm asking for the meeting to proceed forward. And I don't, everyone can have their opinion. They can have their opinion, but I would like to see that the work that's been done by the groups and the practitioners in our city who are working with people, I'm not about to push people out, how we invite people in. I talked to somebody today that said, hey, I pay for my garbage out in the county, and they would love to have some of the amenities we have in the city. Well, guess what? That costs. So, I'm not going back 30 years to, which is obviously that, let's lower taxes. Well, what services do we want to live without? No one wants to have that conversation. Everyone wants everything. But we want to have a 30-second soundbite that say we lower taxes to get there. I mean, that's, that's good, but in reality, we still have to work on becoming a good city. If we, if we don't have affordable housing for people who are the service workers in our community, that's where communities run into issues. Businesses need workers. They don't want to pay a wage that will allow people to sometimes afford all of what it takes to live in the community, and so then they don't have the worker base. So then we get into, how much are we paying people per hour, which now we're making people's choices for them. Not everybody comes to the same perspective at life at the same time. So, what else do we have to say from this conversation? I've said a lot, I have went on, and I want to make sure that the two recommendations are put forward. So, did I make that clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Higginson.
Thank you. You know, obviously, I guess, when I was talking a minute ago, and the very first thing I said was, as far as what we can do is, we can't set prices. Obviously, any types, any type of price controls have failed everywhere it was tried. What we can do is try to raise income, and we can do that by having less regulation. You look at our national economy now, you have unemployment down, lowest it's ever been, wages growing. Things are happened because of one set of ideals said, we need more government, another said, we need less government. Which one worked? Look at that if you want. We need to try to do the same thing here, and that's why what I said is, looking back historically, compare us to what we've done before. We've added lots of things over the years. If we look at how those actually negatively impacted, not just because, I mean, people have very good hearts, they wanted to do good, totally understand. We've got to look at the difference between what's the desire versus what actually worked. So, if something actually worked versus didn't work, we should try to do something differently. Lots of things in here that are just, it's, it's a lot more government control of things, and I think, as I mentioned earlier, that I don't think that really works. And I think we can look historically to see that it hasn't worked, because our poverty numbers are through the roof, because people with means have left the city. Let's try to figure out a way to change that. Now, one thing I will say that is, on a positive of this, that I appreciated, was the fact of what you've mentioned about public employees living in the city. Now, with that, we have a policy, or there was a policy, which only half of the department heads, I think, unless it's changed, hopefully, live in the city. So, hopefully, when we have a policy that, so if we're going to try to have, you know, the folks picking up trash, or the firemen, or the police officers having to live in the city, I think we should, when we have a policy, or if not we, I guess the city management has a policy that says department heads are going to live in the city, because they set rules and laws and are pushed for some things and pushed for spending of money, that they should live in the city. I think that's a first step, is to follow what has already been stated as policy. I think that's a very first one. And sometimes when people lead, others will follow. And so, when you have a department head that doesn't live in the city because it's cheaper or better or whatever, living out in the county, and they come in the city, I think that helps others that are under them to say, hey, I'm going to live in the city, too. So, I think that helps with values of property. We appreciate we have three employees, City Council does, and by the way, City Council is paid well underneath that numbers we've been talking about. Our pay is $10,000 a year. So, we have three city employees, which are required to live in the city, and all three live in the city, which is great.
So, am I hearing a recommendation that 100% of our employees should live in the city?
No. No, I'm saying that we would need to begin down that process of at least the policy that's there, that's department heads, that sign a contract, that say we're going to live in the city. Granted, I understand there's exceptions for, because of certain things, totally get that, but it shouldn't be half.
So, should it be 100% of employees who are employees of the city of Lynchburg living in the city, if the department heads all agreed today to sign a house contract?
I think that-
Would we then follow suit with 100% of employees saying that they need to live in the city as well? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not at all. No, I'm just saying, one of his things that he had on there was saying that public employees should live in the city. Obviously, that isn't our, our job. I mean, that's the city management to say where they live, you know? All I'm saying is, if you're putting a policy that says, we should at least follow through with the department heads, I'm not saying by any means saying that all city employees, but we should be attractive. We don't, we don't force people to live somewhere. We should be attractive, and as you mentioned before, why people wanted to live in the city, because they have great firemen, they have great trash pickup and water. It should be attractive, it's not, nothing is forced or contrived.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I just feel bad for everybody's got to sit here and watch all this, so thanks for your patience. You know, I think this is, this is a classic, you know, divide about the value of government. What's our role supposed to be to each other, as neighbors, as fellow citizens? Does government have a hand here in trying to foster an environment that makes affordable housing possible for people? Or do we say, let the free market reign? Let it sort of resolve this issue? Well, I got to tell you, it hasn't really seemed to resolve the issue. The issue still remains. And I would ask the folks up here on this dais, how many of us are struggling to make How many of us have been evicted? Show of hands? Nobody on this dais has experienced what thousands of our neighbors in this city are struggling with every day. And then we get this opportunity, this privilege to sit up here and pontificate about why they might or might not be struggling with these issues, without having any real conception, aside from, to with, you know, respect, and I'm glad the council member has read the book, but lived experience. And I don't pretend to have that lived experience, but I certainly know enough to know that I don't know a lot about what I'm talking about. And I'm not going to go out there and, and preach and make pronouncements about who has value in this community, and who's law-abiding, and whether or not we, people deserve decent, a decent place to live based on, you know, their income bracket. It's about treating people with dignity and respect. And government has a hand in this, not the full hand, this is a community effort. We have partners right here, sitting right in front of us. They're not members of the government, they're people who care. And we should be here to help them do their work and be willing partners, not naysayers, not backbiters, we should be here to help them. That's what I think our role is. And I'll continue making that argument. So, I look forward to the conversation that we're going to have in a couple of months here with the Housing Authority. That's going to be good fun.
Yes, Mr. Verchek. Thank you, Councilmember Wright.
I just want to share for the record that eight of our 23 department directors and leadership team do not live in the city. The majority lives in the city.
Eight?
So, we have-
John Stone.
Yes, it has.
Good point.
So, again, is that leading us to a conversation that if all eight decide, that now we're going to think it worthy that all 100% of our employees live in the city? That's what I heard, so I'm just trying to clarify.
Heard that from who?
I, I just heard you say that if all of our employees moved in the city, you said it would be a leadership by example, that everyone else should as well.
Maybe we should actually really try to listen to one another rather than writing our retort speech. our retort speech. My whole comment was the fact, I don't think anybody else heard me say that I demanded all city employees live in the city. I said the one thing that Reed had put on here that I can appreciate is the fact that he said, you know, that is something that actually the city government, the actual, the executive branch has control over. They can say where their people live and don't live. We don't. We have, say, over three people. You know, and sometimes people criticize me for saying, why did you reiterate? Why did you repeat your thing? Well, I just said the exact same thing that I'm saying again now, because apparently somebody didn't hear me, and putting words in my mouth that I said all city employees must live in the City of Lynchburg. All I did is responded to what he said as one of the items. So, I mean, please don't put words in my mouth when I didn't even close to say that. Did I clarify that now?
I think-
That I'm not putting that forward as a proposal?
No, you said leadership by example, maybe then others will move into the city if all of our leaders move into the city.
Great.
Is that what you said?
Absolutely. Not by, not by forcing.
Okay, so I heard, I heard what you said.
You understand the difference between leadership and a whip? I mean, I'm not, I'm not talking about enslaving people that say, hey, if you work for the city, you must live here. I'm saying freedom. So I don't know where you're coming off of that. So anyway, you can, you can say your words what you want.
Because you inferred that if leadership moves into the city, it's lead by example that others should move in as well? That was what was inferred?
They could move in. They could move in because they think it's a fabulous place to live, work, and play, because taxes are low and regulation is good, and we got safe neighborhoods. Great, absolutely.
Thank you. Do you need anything else from us to proceed on that? Oh, Councilmember Perrow, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I really wish that we could work on respecting people's comments on this, on this, on this dais. Mr. Wright, I agree with you. I've never been evicted, but I probably issue maybe 12 eviction notices a year to others. All right? And does that make me a bad person? I would certainly hope not, because I certainly see it. I certainly see it in other areas. And those eviction notices I'm serving typically are in where the rents are between $350 and $500 a month. We're not talking about middle, middle-class, median household earners here. They have the ability to buy a house anywhere they want in the city. Well, maybe not anywhere they want in the city, and maybe that's why they're choosing, or they're saying there's not a place, because they're making the social economic choice not to live in certain areas of the city. That's on them, certainly not on us. And what do we do when somebody not pays their water bill? Or what does the gas company do if you don't pay the gas bill? Or the electric company pay if you don't pay the electrical bill? They get shut off. So if you don't pay your rent bill, why is it bad not to shut them off? Why is it, why is it, why are landlords being demonized for shutting off? Because that person is in fact stealing from landlords. Now, I'm just explaining that you know, that there's another side to this. And, and if, if the landlord is being paid on a steady, a steady basis, which I will tell you, as, as somebody that does own rental property, most of which is in Campbell County, actually, that the best thing you can have is a long-term tenant that pays, pays every month, even a little bit late's just fine, but as long as they're steady payers, because then you can keep up with the maintenance, you can provide what they need, and you don't have the turnover, because the turnover cost is what you have. I remember, Ms. Fagan, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but we've gotten to be very good at turnovers at the Housing Authority, but each turnover, what? I mean, every time we turn a property over, it's, it's, sometimes, I've seen $5,000 turnovers before. She's nodding her head for those that can't see, but I think it ranges between, you know, $1,500 to $5,000 on an average. Ma'am?
Average is about two.
Average is about two. All right, that's a good number. All right, so it averages about $2,000 a unit to turn over. I've got, the best tenant I have is an elderly gentleman who has just retired from, from the school system. He is, he's a custodian with the school system, and he lives in a studio apartment in, right next to where my, my office is. His rent is $400 a month. I talk to him weekly, because I see him on the, on the street. He is as happy as he can be. Would, you know, would I like to up, upgrade that apartment and see if I could get more for it? Yeah, possibly, but he's a great tenant, and I would much rather have him there happy than, than have to go through the problem of switching somebody out. So you need to, just think about the, the economics of it all. Yes, sir?
Thank you. And I just want to be clear, I don't think that certainly, I don't think any of us are trying to be prescriptive about what the solutions here might be, or demonize certainly any member of our community.
I don't think any of us demonize landlords. I'm sorry to interrupt, but-
No, right, so certainly that's not the intent, but just, I think, the bigger, the macro question here is, what role should we be playing?
And, and you're right. I think there should be a meeting, and thanks for bringing this up, Madam Mayor, about, between the Housing Authority and, and City Council. I think that'd be beneficial. I think the Housing Authority is in the best position to take a lead role on this. And the best thing that I've seen in a while from the Housing Authority is, is, is Madam Mayor and I witnessed was, I'm gonna get the name of it wrong, but it's the, it's the Housing Clearing House?
Affordable Housing Resource Center.
Thank you, the Affordable Housing Resource Center, which has, which is developing a website that will provide a list of all the rental properties available in Lynchburg. I think that that is gonna be of tremendous value, because one of the concerns is there's not a single database or a single area where you can go to look up houses. I went to one, one specific area. I think you're gonna be shocked at the number of units available. I think you're gonna be shocked at the prices at which they are available. And I think it's more of a problem of having qualified people, landlords willing to rent to certain people, because of credit history, because of past rental history. But if you're in that middle-income bracket, I, I just, I dispute the fact that you've got housing issues. You may not be able to buy a house where you want to buy a house, but you can buy a lot of houses in Lynchburg for that amount. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilder.
Just in closing, comment, again, I'm, thank you for the report. It was very enlightening just to hear more information about affordable housing. I think for us as a City Council members, I think it's up to us to be the, to be the facilitators. I'm not saying for us to dictate the pricing of apartments or housing of that nature, but I think it's up to us to help facilitate the discussion. I think that is so important. And we have such great programs like through CDBG and the work that Mel Walker's doing, her team, and, and through Rush Homes, the work today doing, and so many great programs, Habitat, and the Steve Mr. Gertie's here, all the work that they have done in our community is just mainly through community partners. And one thing about Lynchburg, we have so many great community partners. It's not about city funds or government funds, it's about the great people of Lynchburg working together to, for places like that they can do, a Habitat for Humanity. I went to their 20, I think, 5th or 30th, 30th, I think, anniversary luncheon recently, and just to hear the persons talk about how, the feeling they have when they're able to buy their own home, and the respect they have. They were heartbreaking people, their, their parents weren't able to give them money for their first home time, work, work, home project, like Len Keg had their first-time home buyers program. Things like that for, for a person with low income are so crucial. So we as a community can help, can facilitate those discussions and see what we as a community can do to work together. Not saying government's gonna give money here and give money here, or we're gonna dictate to, 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 to property owners, but what we can do as a community can work together to help facilitate the discussion, and what we can do, bring in more resources, or also even, even with programs, the programs that I hear from Chicago or whatever, just not, not to be a lack of Chicago or Charlotte, but just to hear what other cities are doing, just say, mm, how about something like that, or an idea like that work in Lynchburg? But I think it just helps for a discussion, helps for ideas, helps bringing in my understanding about, about where there's a program that are even in our community, that we can take advantage of, and what we can do as a community together to make Lynchburg even a greater place. So I appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate the group that has worked on this project to make sure that we have affordable housing for everyone in our community, we can take advantage of the resources that we do have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilder, and I do look forward to those, meeting, that meeting, and to all of the practitioners in the room. Thank you for coming, thank you for the work you do, and I know there is a will of council to work with you on behalf of our citizens in our city to create the impact that we want to see in the future. And so we look forward to doing that. Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, I'm going to continue on to consideration of adopting the resolution number R-19-055 to proclaim the City of Lynchburg is a Bee City USA. I know all of you want to hear this presentation on being a bee city, so, thank you.
Dress up.
Very good.
Oh, nice.
And Ms. Jennifer Jones is here for us. Thank you.
Mayor Tweedy, members of City Council, I'd like to give you some background on the city's current efforts related to pollinators, and introduce you to Blue Ridge Conservation spokesperson Heidi James to tell you more about Bee City USA. With respect to the city, there has been an ongoing effort between Parks and Recreation and Public Works beginning 20 years ago, with Park Service Manager Andrew Reader requesting or requiring that we use only or as many as possible native pollinators when establishing plantings in the parks. When possible, Public Works has adopted that practice on all publicly-owned properties. This can be seen in almost all of the city-maintained flower beds and rain gardens. Public Works collaborating with Parks and Rec has gradually integrated pest management practices wherever possible to significantly reduce the use of herbicides and pesticides. In the Parks and Recreation Department's Please Do Hug the Trees campaign brochure, public awareness was created with the No Glyphosate in Natural Areas and Children's Play Areas guideline, which is glyphosate is what's used in Roundup. And that's a guideline. When developing the award-winning teaching gardens in the community and neighborhood centers, Parks and Recreation employee and master gardener Lucy Hudson recognized the importance of pollinators to our food supply and incorporated pollinator beds that integrate pest management practices so that we have no spraying in all of the teaching gardens. These best practices are utilized in programming to communicate the value of bees and other pollinators to the community. As part of the Please Do Hug the Trees campaign, Lucy, and, and with the help of Howard Covey, our facility coordinator, spearheaded the Million Pollinator Garden Challenge brochure, and we're proud to say that thousands of brochures have been distributed throughout our Parks and Trail kiosks as well as our centers, encouraging residents to plant pollinator beds and educate on the importance of bees to the food supply. Park Services with Lucy's guidance designed, designed and built pollinator beds at Riverside Park and at the Virginia Cooperative Extension Office, and that where there was a feature article in the news in advance about those gardens. The city's committed to maintaining the right plants in the butterfly gardens at Riverside, which were also built as a, as part of the Please Do Hug the Trees campaigns, Parks for Monarchs component. Lynchburg Parks and Recreation Department has tabled at numerous events throughout the city, providing educational interaction about pollinators, highlighted by Lucy suited up in her bee outfit. Lucy, as a resident expert, has organized, worked with many organizations such as Horizon and numerous school groups to further encourage gardening and pollinator education. Lucy, along with the Neighborhood Center Coordinator Charlotte Lester, interviewed with Spirit FM Radio, logging an excellent public information segment regarding teaching gardens and pollinators as they were incorporated into the Learn, Grow, Eat, Go, which is a cooperative extension program at our neighborhood centers. Our department naturalists have presented many, hundreds of pollinator programs to private school groups and organizations. So in the words of Andrew Reader, our Park Service Manager, when Heidi James brought the idea of the Bee City designation to the city, the city was already doing pretty much everything they wanted us to commit to, so it was an easy yes. Now, a little bit about Heidi James. Heidi James is a board member of the Blue Ridge Conservation, a nonprofit partnership between Lynchburg Garden Club and Hillside Garden Club, which was established to increase public awareness of conservation issues in Central Virginia and to promote stewardship of our environment. BRC has been working with Lynchburg Parks and Recreation to sponsor Bee City USA efforts. They have been working, they've also been working with Blair Fairbrother of Leaf and Kirk Schultz of the Buildings and Grounds Department to plant pollinator-friendly beds on Lynchburg highways. So this is different than what's in the parks, this is on the highways. They sponsored three one-acre test beds that are just starting to bloom. One is at Ward's Road near Chick-fil-A, and there are two near Gray Street on Route 29 South. Heidi's past president of the Lynchburg Garden Club, the past historian of the Garden Club of Virginia. She's the chairman of the Conservation Awards Committee for the Garden Club of Virginia. Heidi's the recipient of the Garden Club of Virginia's DeLacy Grey Conservation Medal for efforts that led to the removal of the wreckage of the bridge from the James River in Lynchburg near Treasure Island. Heidi worked with the Lynchburg Historical Foundation, Rivermont House Incorporated, Friends of EC Glass Art Collection. She served on the Lynchburg Museum Systems Board of Advisors, and is the president, or excuse me, the parent council of the University of Virginia Semester at Sea. Heidi has written several articles for Lynchburg Magazine on local history, which is Lynch's, Lynch's Ferry Magazine, Lynch's Ferry Magazine. And so now for more of the buzz about Bee City and its partners, Heidi James.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm excited to be here. I'm sure all of you have been paying attention to the news and realize that the decline of the bees and pollinators is a worldwide concern. I have several other sponsors who are with me in this effort. Aside from Blue Ridge Conservation and the Lynchburg Garden Club and the Hillside Garden Club, we are happy to include Piedmont Beekeepers, Randolph College, Central Virginia Master Naturalists, and the Lynchburg Area Food Council with Pat Haley here, who's here today for, for them. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what Bee City USA is. It's sponsored by the Xerxes Society. The Xerxes Society was founded in 1971, and it's named for the Xerxes blue butterfly, which is the first known butterfly to become extinct due to a result of human activities, and that happened in 1941. They act as a science-based resource for farmers, gardeners, and cities, and the Xerxes Society has the largest team of pollinator conservation specialists in the world. Bee City was launched by one woman named Phyllis Stiles in 2012, and she was brought in to join with the Xerxes Society in 2018. Bee City USA is a network of communities coast-to-coast supporting pollinators. Currently, there are 88 Bee Cities. Scottsville is the only other city in Virginia that is a Bee City, but you might want to know that North Carolina already has 19. There are also Bee Campuses. There are a total of 76 Bee Campuses in the United States, and Randolph College, right here in Lynchburg, was the first one in Virginia to have that designation, and now James Madison has become one. The reason the Xerxes Society and Bee City USA is trying to reach out to cities around the United States is because more pesticides are used in neighborhoods than are used in agricultural areas. And also, lights in cities can cause problems for pollinators at night. Also, if you plant native plants and limit pesticides, you can make a difference. And so it's all about raising awareness. Once and if we become a Bee City, we will be asked to do three things: raise awareness to this problem, enhance habitats by planting native plants, and celebrating achievements. To do these things, we would create and disseminate local native plant lists, which is being done by Parks and Rec. We would create and enhance pesticide-free pollinator habitats, which we can do individually, and it's also being done by the city. We can host and promote pollinator conservation awareness activities through events, signage, and social media. Parks and Rec is already doing a number of things, and the Lynchburg Garden Club and the Hillside Garden Club have Garden Day every year, which is a qualified event for Bee City. And then following the renewal application guidelines, we will share our achievements with Bee City USA. So we will let them know what we're doing. We may be involved in counting bees and trying to find out if we're making a difference, and we will try to renew our designation annually. The benefits to this city are, we will be invited to join in on conference calls and webinars to learn and promote and share information about how to help pollinators. We will become an affiliate, which institutionalizes the local government and the community's commitment to pollinator conservation, and provides support for widespread collaboration to establish and maintain healthy pollinator habitats on public and private land. It provides accountability for achieving pollinator conservation with annual reporting. And Bee City USA will disseminate information, including funding opportunities, pollinator research, habitat enhancement through emails. And they will also provide press releases, T-shirt designs, bee decals, pollinator garden signs, and et cetera. By doing this, we can ensure- By doing this, we can ensure the survival of a vital animal species. We can improve local food production. We can stimulate local plant and nursery market sales. We can engage the community in removing invasive plants and encourage native plants. We can address pest problems less toxically. We can heighten awareness of seasonal changes. We can increase small business opportunities. And just to remind you, 150 food crops rely on pollinators. And that is it for me unless you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wright?
I think this is really exciting.
So, thanks very much for coming and it certainly is a, it's like, it's a nice way to conclude our work session. So, thank you very much for, for coming.
It's housing for bees.
Yeah, right. And sharing this with us. I did have a question, though, about the Bee City Working Group and who composes that group?
Well, it's, it's made up of members of the Department of Parks and Recreation and also Buildings and Grounds. And I think there are a couple of other city departments that are involved. And then it's several of us from Blue Ridge Conservation, which I think would be I, myself, Betty Bybee, Sarah Helloel, who's president of Hillside Garden Club, and also several people from Piedmont Beekeepers. The Allison Brooks from Randolph College, who's the head of, who's in charge of bee campus over there. Some Virginia master naturalists and Pat Haley with the Lynchburg Area Food Council. And anyone else who would like to participate is welcome. Happy to have as many people join as, as would like to.
I definitely want a bee decal.
Oh, yes, we'll get you.
Cool, thanks. I think this is great.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
I planted bee balm. Does that count?
Sure does. I do have a whole mess of it. I just have one question. The renewal fee is based on Lynchburg population. What are we talking about?
It is based on population, so every city is different. For Lynchburg, the cost is $400 a year, and that was paid by the Lynchburg and Hillside Garden Clubs through Blue Ridge Conservation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perro?
How about hives? Any plan to put in hives? I mean, back to bee housing. But I'm, so I'm looking forward to having locations for hives in the near future.
There are so many efforts now. There's an effort in Raleigh, North Carolina called Bee Downtown, and they're putting hives on the roofs of city buildings.
Oh, interesting.
And they've started doing that in Atlanta. And so, I think we would love to talk about putting hives on the roofs of some city buildings. And it gets the bees out of the way and, and it doesn't seem to cause any trouble. And I know Randolph has a lot of hives and I think Sweetbrier also is investing in some hives. And I think also the state of Virginia offers free hives to anyone who wants to become a beekeeper. And they're trying to push that beekeeping.
I know because there is such a concern about the honeybee population. I would love to see Lynchburg, the city, do something to encourage beekeeping in the city. I wasn't thinking about having our own hives necessarily. But, but Pocket Parks or maybe, or in Peaks View Park or in, in locations off of trails. But to have a partnership with some beekeepers to allow them to store, I think that'd be great.
The Piedmont area beekeepers will be the ones to talk to about that. I think they've.
I guess my, my point is I would not be opposed at all to having a partnership with that group to allow them to use city property for, for the same purposes.
Great.
Don't have like empty pins and beehives at the same location, but. You need a motion for this? So moved.
Probably do it's a resolution. Yeah, a second.
All right, the motion has been made. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being there with us. Thank you. Motion has been made to adopt regulation R-19-055. Any other discussion? Please cast your vote.
Randy's gone, of course.
Is it?
All right, try it now.
Okay, so, that's fine.
For anybody.
All right. The motion passes. Thank you. Six with one absence. Thank you very much. All right, if there is no other items, can I have roll call? I'll start with Councilmember Perro. All right, Councilmember Huggelson. Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Wilder.
No items.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
No items.
All right, thank you. And I don't have any items either. So, right now, we are adjourned until 7:30.